Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. This meeting is called to order and we'll begin with a moment of prayer by Commissioner Jay Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good and gracious God, during this holiday season, we have just celebrated our nation's Thanksgiving Day. Inasmuch as you are the Creator of all things, with gratitude, we thank you for all the gifts and blessings that we have received. First and foremost, we thank you for the awesome gift of life. We thank you for the creation of the earth, the sun, the moon, and the stars, and for all the living creatures. And on a more local level, we thank you for helping men and women to discern their life's vocations. We thank you for those who provide service to our county and communities as first responders in law enforcement, fire service, health, EMS, and 911 dispatch. We thank our constituents for trusting this board to provide the numerous services that they deserve and expect. And for all these things, we most profoundly thank you, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next, I'll ask legal counsel Matt Norford to lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance. Stand, please.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Naka Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Corvus President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is the approval of the agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda. Motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
Been moved and supported. Are there any changes or corrections?
I move to amend the agenda to add resolutions recommended by the Finance and Asset Management Committee as follows. Resolution 2023-11190. Resolution 2023-11191. Resolution 2023-11192. Resolution 2023-11193.
Support Deaton. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next is correspondence. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I believe I have, I have that from Commissioner Sample, seconded by Commissioner Fiani.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next on the agenda is correspondence, and I don't see any. Number seven on the agenda is called to the public. Madam Clerk, do we have?
I have one card this evening from Bob Azat from Marion Township.
Thank you, Bethany. Mr. Chair or Commissioners, I have a quick presentation for them. I have the American flag and then the state of Michigan flag that I present today to the Board of Commissioners. The, I tried to get both of these on November 11th, Veterans Day, but I could only get the Michigan flag and Veterans Day. And it comes with a certificate of authenticity. And the American flag was.
Excuse me, or I'm having a hard time hearing you on Zoom. Are you speaking into a microphone?
Yeah, pretty close.
Is it? There must be a switch there.
Can you hear me now?
You can. It's just a little low, but that's fine.
Okay. Like I said, it comes with the board. Couldn't see a switch right here.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, the, you guys, you guys have a blue light. We have a red light at the Capitol, so I'm not used to these blue lights. It's been a, a times since I've been in a patrol car. Anyway, both these flags flew over the Capitol. The American flag was on November 9th. The state of Michigan flag was on Veterans Day, November 11th. So if I may approach Mr. Chair.
Bethany, can I get a photograph?
Want me to come down there? Or you're gonna come up here?
I'm gonna come up there.
Come on up. Can I get all the board together?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this, this certificate is issued to certify that this flag was flown over the state Capitol in Lansing on November the 9th, 2023. So Bob, I want to thank you for this. We really appreciate it. You know, you, you've gone to Lansing, but you never really left. How old, did you?
The saying goes that you gotta come home sometime.
Get something to bring back home. We're always glad to see you. Don't, don't be a stranger.
I appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thanks. Take care.
You guys do a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sir, appreciate you.
Where are you headed now, Bob?
Going to dinner with my wife.
Oh.
Good move. Good move.
Yeah, that's a smart move.
Yep.
You're always welcome here.
Say hello. Thanks, guys. Good seeing you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of.
Commissioner, we have some, call the public on Zoom.
Okay.
The first one I have up is Cindy McNevage.
Very good. Hi, Commissioners. I just want to make a suggestion. We do this in Hamburg. We have a running spreadsheet of what has been allotted with the ARPA funds and what it's been spent on. I see that you've been making some choices to spend the money, but it would be really nice for the public to know what that running total is and how much we have left. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And next I have Randy Clausen.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing this comment to public. And I was impressed with the prayer that opened this meeting because it's the, the reason that I decided to come tonight and to speak was that I wanted to tell each of you, thank you for what you do for our county and, and for your dedication to making Livingston County a better place. And I, and I appreciate that. You know, my story, I'm, I'm wanting to be extra kind to those who are disadvantaged or who are living on the margins of our society. And unfortunately, that's about 24% of the people in Livingston County. And so I just ask that as we're looking into the new year, that you would continue to have that uppermost in your mind that, that, that we are required by the same Jesus that you just prayed to, to consider the least of the people who are marginalized and are having, needing a hand up. So thank you for all the work that you do, and let's make sure that we have public services for those who are, have special needs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
I do not have any more on Zoom. Thank you.
Okay. So that will end call to the public for this first session. Chair will now entertain a motion for the approval of minutes from the meeting of November 13th, 2023. Motion to approve, Smith. Support Helserman. Been moved and supported. Are there any comments or changes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next is tabled items from previous meetings, and there are none. Item 10 is reports. We have a guest, Shemar Herron, the Executive Director of Michigan Works. Mr. Herron, if you would, please give us a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank the board. As a body, it is always an honor and a pleasure to come before you all. I'm going to invite our Service Center Manager Dawn Ari to join me.
Please do.
Any of you may know Dawn, as she runs our Service Center here in Livingston County, right around the corner on Byron Road. We also have Mr. Richard Scott, who is our new Business Services Manager. And essentially, what Mr. Scott is tasked with doing is ensuring that we are engaging the businesses of Livingston County as they see fit with the tools that we have available by way of our program and funding sources. So this is my team. Misty Schulter is our Deputy Director. Could not be with us. She takes her duties as Deputy very seriously, but she takes her duties as a mother even more seriously. So Misty could not be with us this morning, this afternoon. But we do have a presentation. Not much has changed from last year in terms of the population and certainly nothing has changed in terms of the five counties that we serve. As you know, we serve almost a million people in terms of population, but that labor force number is something that I've really started to drill in on. The labor force is those who are actively looking and willing to participate in the workforce. We hear so often that the unemployment rate is really low. I think that number can be tricky in terms of how you utilize it to make sure we are getting the businesses, the talent that they need. But the labor force is a true indicator, and right now, we don't have enough people in the labor force to fill all of the positions that are openly available, not only here in Livingston, but that's across the state as well as the country. We need to start getting more people into the labor force. About 12% of that population is below poverty. We're down about 4% from 2017 in terms of the ALIS population. And lastly, one of my favorite bullet points is 37%, 37% of the workers in our region travel up to 30 minutes to go to work, and another 15% travel more than 60 minutes to go to work. I think that stat tells us that people don't see boundaries when it's time for them to go and be employed. They'll go where they have to go. They'll commute longer as long as the position is providing them with the quality of life that they need. So I think it's important for us to think about the bigger picture regionally and across the state in terms of where our people are driving to, to gain and maintain employment. Next slide, please. All right. I want to make sure that I thank Commissioners Helserman and Naka Gary for their work on our Consortium Board. As you know, that board is essentially our administrative board. Nothing we do can be done without that board's involvement. So on behalf of our organization, we want to thank this body for allowing Commissioners Helserman and Naka Gary to, to participate and ensure us being, you know, a viable place of business. And I have to tell you that they do not relent when they have questions, comments, concerns. They're looking for data. They will not stop until we make sure we get them exactly what they're asking for, and it holds me solid as well. So I appreciate that work. Next slide, please. All right, great. So the last time I was here, I talked about the move that we made for your building, right? So we moved you all from a former manufacturing in the Maugham Community College space over to Byron Road. Dawn has done an amazing job bringing that building not only to fruition, but making sure it's a safe and accommodating space for all who need it. When I stepped in there today, there was no less than eight or nine people in there receiving services upfront and several people working with our career advisors. So the space is doing well. But in Washington County, we had to move as well. We had been in the space for 28 years. And so we finally procured a new space right off of Ellsworth Road. We will be inviting this entire body in the spring to the open house. But we wanted to make sure you knew that we did have to make a move in Washington, similar to us having to make a move in Livingston County as well. But we got better infrastructure. It's more centrally located in the county, and it continues to have bus access for those who need it. And similar to the move here in Livingston, the customers and the service delivery has been on a steady incline, so we're seeing more people. Next slide, please. We'd like to quickly go over our organizational targets. These five targets represent what we as an organization deem to be cross-cutting across the organization. So no matter if it's career seeker services, business seeker services, adult education, communications, these five targets allow us to operate at a certain speed and pace to deliver services across our five counties. We did not hit our training completion rate. The goal was 50%. As you can see, we ended up right around 27%. Our apprenticeship target was 250. We made 208. The year before was probably a solid 10. So we have started to put a serious focus on apprenticeships. Mr. Scott has an excellent background in apprenticeships, and so we foresee ourselves hitting our apprenticeship target. And we're talking about being an intermediary, and so that's going to allow us to be engaged in their apprenticeship space in a much more meaningful and thoughtful and intentional way. Employers served. We did not reach that thousand mark, but we got 782, and that was with less than half of a business services team. So on a great day, we have 12 people on that team. I think over the course of the year, we were no higher than six. So we had a lot of movement, just like many other businesses. We had tremendous turnover on the business services team. So I'm very proud of that 782 businesses served, because I, I think we're going to far exceed that in this year, because we have, our team is starting to round out more. As you can see, we were successful in the number of people that we saw. So we targeted 1,652 participants. We ended up servicing 1,856, so we're very proud of that. Another proud moment is jobs filled. So we wanted to fill 5,000 jobs. As you can see, we almost filled 6,000 jobs. So we are starting to see an uptick in us crawling out of the effects of the C-word that had all of us pretty much downtrodden for two or two and a half years. But COVID's effects are, I won't say slowly, they've waned tremendously. So I'm very proud of the fact that we met those jobs filled target as well. Next slide, please. So specifically to Livingston County, you all did hit your training completion rate at 53%. Great job, Dawn. Our apprenticeship target, we got work to do. And I think with Scotty being here, more will be able to be accomplished, especially knowing the spaces and places we're going to go with not only Mr. Scott, but his team. And he has Will Williamson, who has already hit the ground running and is doing some amazing work. Very solid in terms of the employers served as well as the participants targeted. And also, you can see you all clearly did an amazing job with jobs filled. So the target was 550 here, and you all ended up almost with 650 jobs filled. So again, I want to send kudos to Dawn, but also for any of you, if you made any recommendations for individuals to come and receive our services. Next slide, please. All right, just a couple of organizational highlights outside of the targets. So we enhanced our micro credentialing training partnerships. So we are going out and we're working with those who can provide credentials that are not one to two years to receive the credentials. It may be six weeks. It may be six months, but we are trying to get people employed, not being trained over an extensive point in time, because we believe we get them into the employment opportunity and they can continue to upskill themselves while employed. And we have tools that can help those businesses to do that. You may or may not know here in Livingston County, we partner with Work Skills Corporation, but we also partner with the LESA. But in Washington, we added a new in-school youth partner, which is Neutral Zone. Very proud of that. So that brings our youth subcontractors up to eight different organizations across our five counties. Our Washington County Center moved, like I said, after 20-plus years. And lastly, this is a very proud piece. Our organization is one of seven states to receive a federal grant where we go into the Midland Federal Prison, the only federal prison in the state of Michigan, and we deliver work readiness skills to those who are within nine months of release. We partnered with two community organizations, one called A Brighter Way, the other, We the People Opportunity Farm. And they go in, the leaders of those organizations each served 25-plus years in prison. So both of the directors there have lived experience, and they go in. So we do workforce readiness, work readiness. They do the social emotional part. So helping people understand what does it mean after 25-plus years of being locked up? Or 10 years, a lot has changed. How do you go back and build relationships with your family? How do you maintain some sort of self-confidence? How do you understand these things all over again, right? It didn't look like that in 1997 or 2007, to be quite honest. So how do you start to prepare yourself emotionally to re-enter society and be successful? One of seven states in the state of Michigan through our work with Labor and Economic Opportunity was one of the seven to receive that grant, and we are really proud of the work. The work has started. We do have, I think, one person coming from Livingston who goes into the facility to help deliver those work readiness skills that we're providing to those close to release. Next slide, please. I want to talk briefly about some of the work that we're doing in terms of our business services team. There's a tremendous amount of training grant opportunities. So whether it's Go On Pro Talent Fund, whether it is an OJT, whether it is incumbent worker, meaning individuals who are currently employed, we can work with the business to upskill them and create opportunities for them to grow, and then create new position openings for others to step in. So it's that continuous growth. And you have to excuse me, I did use some jargon when I said OJT, that is on-the-job training. That's the opportunity. If you know of a business who's hiring, they should not hire that individual until they come and speak with us. We have the ability to help offset the training cost at a space in place of up to 50% for up to six months. It just depends on the numbers and how we work it, but up to 50% and up to six months of offsetting those training opportunities as they're onboarding people. If they already hired the person, an OJT is off the table. So before they hire, they need to come and at least speak with us to find out if they're eligible for that opportunity. I spoke about the apprenticeship expansion and development. We're putting a lot of pressure on our newbie over here. We're hoping that the rookie gets, gets going here, but I've already seen him in action, and I'm excited. And I guarantee those numbers will look very different next year when we come and present before you all. Industry sector collaboratives to solve common problems. Some of them are called industry-led collaboratives. That's where, let's just say, IT, they're having issues around architects. We can work with the IT industry to figure out what are the reasons that these architects positions aren't being filled and find common solutions across the industry. So it's not just one company coming in and telling us. There's multiple companies that are participating. So we have one around healthcare. We have one around IT, and we're looking to grow those industry-led collaborators. Again, we can always help with job posting, assistance, and talent sourcing. But we also have what I call the basic human services, or excuse me, human resources services that we can provide to businesses, such as screening applications, helping with job fairs, helping with employer of the day where they come and post up at our center and let people know they are hiring. So those are some of the areas business services have opportunities for you to be passing along, and we hope that you will. Next slide, please. Quick update in terms of some funding awarded. Go On Pro Talent Fund, the amount awarded was $692,239. That was for the 2022 year. Those numbers are what was awarded. It may not be what was spent down. So if you have some questions around what was actually spent by those businesses, I have that data for you. I talked about the incumbent workers, those individuals who are currently employed with the business. About $20,000 worth of incumbent worker training was provided across your county in 2022. Next slide, please. So I get to set up and let Dawn do her thing. Dawn, go right ahead.
All right. I'm not sure if I can follow you, because you just have to give the gab, and he's good. So phenomenal boss to work for. So thank you again for having us. Several of you I've seen around the county. Actually, I've had dinner with you twice. I don't know. Show up, meet your wife, and so that, that's, that's been really a great to get to know some of you outside of this forum. So if you want to move to the next slide, please, that would be great. Whenever we talk about our services, one of the things that I always say to people is, I believe that Michigan Works Southeast is the best-kept secret, but we want that secret to get out. We want everyone in our county to really know what we provide. And I have to admit, I lived here for going on 30 years in Livingston County, and a friend of mine worked for Michigan Works, and I was looking for a job. She goes, I think you might like working where I work. And I don't even know what Michigan Works is or what it does until I started to work for Michigan Works. And I'm like, wow, I wish I would have known about this, but the bad thing is, is I would not have been employed here if I did know, because I would have probably sought out the services and found a different job. So, but I, I love where I work, and all five counties, it's great. Like currently, I'm helping out in Washington County quite a bit, so I get to see that new facility, which is phenomenal. So anyway, our services, we, we have a resource room, and this is a really good thing for this slide in particular, for those of you who are less familiar with what we do, because it does really explain some of the things that people will get when they come into our center or when they call up. Our resource room, when you walk in, you'll see a, a lot of computers in our main area where reception area is, and people can use those computers for a lot of different things. They can get assistance to use those computers. Sometimes folks come in that don't really have the computer skills, and they need some help with their unemployment or looking up job boards that are mostly online or putting an, uploading an application. And we have folks that can help them do that. We can help them get their resume started, and we've got templates. So all they have to do is type it in, so it makes it rather simple for them. So the resource room is a great place for them to work on. So um, the resource room is a great place for them um to work on things that are employment-related. Um, we also also have professional development class classes. I know a lot of you receive um a monthly email that I send out. And if you don't, you'd like to, please let me know and I'll add you to our list. It um just kind of gives a little bit of, hey, this is what's happening this month with Michigan Works. Um, but um, in there, I also have a calendar, which are all of what we call our workshops, and they are phenomenal. Um, I highly, highly recommend those who are um looking for a new job to take these classes. They talk about resumes, we talk about interview skills. Um, we have a class on how to make sure your LinkedIn is the best it possibly can be. Um, we also have career and education planning. Um, we have career advisors that can work with anyone that walks in the door. All our services are free, our tax dollars pay for it. Um, and then we can kind of do an assessment when somebody walks in. What do you need help with? What can we do? And um, figure out what they need. If it's training, um, we'll do an intake to see, are they qualified for our services to be able to pay for their training? Um, do they just need help getting their resume in good shape? Whatever it is, our career advisors will sit and they will work with them. And sometimes folks that come in, they they need training, but they don't have the gas to get there. So we also have support services that can also support their education and and training and also to start that new job. So, oh, I got that new job, but okay, I can't get there because I've been unemployed for the last six months and I don't have enough money to get there. So those support services can help, you know, hey, I need my uniform, I need a couple of weeks of gas to get there. Um, access to labor market information. Um, we give them information on what jobs are in high demand. You know, if you're gonna get training, the last thing you want to do is spend time getting training for a job that is not going to be available in the next five years. So um, we give some information that they can look at to see, okay, this is a good job that's suitable for me because it meets what I like to do and what is going to be in demand in the future. Next slide, please. So uh, service centers, I had to, I had to print it out because last year, I remember I couldn't read the slide. So um, service center visitors, um, are, we've seen an increase lately. So you know, as as Shamar was saying, um, you know, the C-word, COVID. I know we saw a a lot of change through COVID and especially recently, we've seen a lot more traffic into the service center. So um, we're pretty excited about that. Overall, through two thousand twenty-two, um, twenty-six thousand total for the five-county region, but five thousand of that was in Livingston alone that we see walking through our doors. So we're 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 pretty busy and those aren't just, you come into the office and it's a two-second thing and you're out. Some of those customers we work with like regularly for several months to um, you know, help them figure out what they want to do for their next move for employment. Next slide, please. Um, our impact at a local level. This is called Barrier Removal Employment Services. It is a grant, we call it BREEZE for short. Um, it is a grant that I actually, when I first heard about this grant, I I love it because there are oftentimes that people will come in that aren't qualified for our other programs and they do need some support. They come in and as y'all know, transportation in this area is a hard thing. So they'll come in, they're like, I have a job, I don't make a lot of money, but my car just died and I need a new car. Can you help me? And that's one of the things that we can do. We can help certain individuals that qualify for this to help them with transportation needs. We can help them with tools and things. I had a gentleman um not that long ago that uh received a new job and he needed a a toolbox. And I'm like, we can do that. Well, I didn't realize that the toolbox was like six hundred dollars. He needed one of those big ones. Well, I don't work on cars, so I'm thinking this twenty-five dollar thing from Walmart. But no, 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 that's not what I need. I'm like, oh, that's why he needed help. So when we got him his toolbox and he's still working and loves his job, but he needed that in order to work. Um, so there are a lot of things that we can help folks with. This is what we did this last year, um, auto insurance, auto repair, clothing, housing rental, legal services. Other, there's a lot of different things in the other. Um, the miles reimbursement, vehicle purchase, work tools and equipment. So um, one of the line items on here that I'm expecting someone to ask about is public transportation, and it's a large number there. In Livingston County, as you know, we we don't have a wealth of that. And so what that money is from is um Business Resource Network is something that we also have a service for. We have um businesses that can uh take part in the Business Resource Network. Some of those businesses for the transportation issue in our area um have the buses from Flint bring people in to work. And we do buy bus passes from the transportation up there. So that's what a lot of that public transportation is here, almost of it. So um, some let's bust to. Next slide, please. Um, impact at the local level, I knew there were some that I could not read from there. Um, some of the things that we did uh this last year, um, I was able to present at the Michigan Education and Careers Event um with LES A. Um, that was in Grand Rapids and that was really good. We got to uh introduce our services to a lot of educators around the state. Um, locally, there are quite a few um that were there that are in our area, which is always good, because some of the students can use our services. And so that was a a really good thing for us to be able to be part of. Um, we also attended Linked Up in Livingston to uh help engage with all of the community partners and folks that um needed the support services at that time. Um, we sponsored Construction Career Days um in April um with Operating Engineers in Howell. And if any of you have not gone there, this April, I highly recommend signing up to go to the Operating Engineers and checking that out. You get a really good idea of the different construction careers. Um, it's a fun day. They just had an event for um this couple of weeks ago for educators and we were able to just be an attendee there and had to play with all the stuff. So um, I highly recommend you sign up and go to that in April. Um, we also uh, we're part of a youth employment fair in April. Um, also again, partnered with LES A with that. It uh, it it is so fun to work with the youth in our county, um, especially those that, you know, their trajectory is going this way and you can help them in their trajectory goes in a a different and better direction. Um, we hope to do that every single year. This was the second year of that particular event and I believe that it's on schedule again for this coming year. Um, tiny writing, but this is um just a success story. Uh, this person happens to be one of our youth, which for us, youth is twenty-four and under. Um, this particular kid was just kind of, you know, going along, doing some part-time jobs and it really wasn't making it for him. Came into our service center, worked with our youth career advisor and um ended up getting some training for CDL and is uh now working for the county. So um, he and he loves it. He absolutely loves it. So he was a a success story that we thought was a good one to share with you. Now, do you want me to do this? Were you doing that one?
I'll take over from here. Thank you.
There you go.
All right, next slide. Uh, I want to recognize that there is a typo in this this slide, so I do deeply apologize. Uh, I do know where I'm at, uh, and we do know who we're presenting to. So I won't say heads or roll because I reviewed this as well. So that means I gotta mix myself too. Uh, but uh, how can I, how can we work together better in terms of collaboration? Uh, earlier you heard me speak, speak about uh our need. Our need is for you to be some of our best advocates. Uh, our need is for you to be speaking to the businesses, letting them know we have resources. Uh, speak, if you know someone who is seeking a career, looking for employment, I'm hoping that you'll say, have you been to Michigan Works? Uh, that's where we need you to come in. Our engine doesn't run properly if you all are uh serving almost as a piston for us. Like you all are going to keep uh our ability to serve your constituents going. And we look for you to be a resource to us in terms of spreading the word about uh what we can do for your community and your constituents. Uh, if you know of any major projects, anything rather is economic development. So we work with Ann Arbor Spark. If there is some uh activity going on there, we are generally involved. But if you find out we are not, please uh reach out either to Ann Arbor Spark or myself and we can make sure we're involved. And if there's any community events that you know of where you think we should be there, whether it's a career fair that the county is holding, if the county would like to hold some sort of career fair, we could be a part of it and be a resource and an asset to not only you all, but your residents and constituents as well. Uh, and that's where we believe the true collaboration will happen. Uh, so next slide, please. Here's our contact information. Uh, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. I try to be as responsive as possible. Uh, and if, again, you have someone that you think should be talking to us. If you have some questions, here's all of our contact information. Dawn is a tremendous asset to the county and the uh the community. So if you want to go through her or if you want to reach out to myself, uh, please do so. We are here to be a service to you and your community. And that, I believe, ends our presentation. So I don't, I I don't have, uh, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. I know it was a little bit.
Mr.
So uh, middle of your deck there, there was a slide about what you provide to those seeking employment, right?
Mm-hmm.
Before it gets to that point, is there any evaluation or profile index done to see what the personality of that individual would fit into, what industries, what type of jobs? Maybe it's service hospitality, maybe it's more, you know, technical, mathematical, maybe it's.
Yes.
You want to talk about?
Sorry. You're the boss.
No, you do the work.
Um, my next move, I actually had it written right here on my paper and I forgot to talk about that. So when um those looking for, you know, career seekers come into the service center, one of the first things that we do with them, I mean, first we talk with them and see what they need. But we will do um a like an assessment. And the one that we tend to use is called my next move. Um, and there's like a lot of little boxes you can check. And I always wondered how accurate they were. And so I sat down and I took it and I'm like, wow, it's pretty good. It landed me right where I needed to be. So um, it it's pretty good. So we do use it and it's a really good guide to just get those who really have no idea to think about. Or if they think, oh, well, I really want to do this. And it's like, well, that's a real people-oriented job and you just told me you don't really like to deal with people. So.
It told me I needed to go in the being a clergyman, which I thought was very interesting. Or forestry, two areas that I was surprised it said, so.
I could see those, actually.
Mark, thank you so much for being here this evening. We appreciate hearing from you. I'm sorry, you had another comment.
I had a couple of questions, if I may.
There you go.
Before you leave, um, your sheet on the contact information, is it possible we can get some phone numbers that we could reach out to you as well?
Absolutely.
Um, uh, two other questions. I I I think, I think in this day and age, m- most people are aware that college is not meant for everybody.
Thank you.
And and so I'm wondering, um, are are you anticipating having some sort of a program that you can have sessions with with high school kids?
We do.
Uh, try to get them to consider a skilled trades situation?
We do already, actually. Um, in October, we spoke for two solid days to students at Howell High School, all about the trades.
Okay.
So, and we continue to to do that and locally. Um, we also have a, it's called Jump Start Your Future. It's a virtual option um that we do have out, that we usually try to run once a year. And it's really the same type of a thing, but it's virtual, so from any school district.
Okay. Um, and one other question, earlier you you mentioned moving into a location, uh, Byron Road.
Yeah.
Um, I live south of town off of Rickett Road. And when every time I heading into town, I I pass a facility there that has a sign out in front, Michigan Works. Is that part of your organization? Is I'm wondering what what their role is.
Road in Brighton?
Yes.
That would be work skills.
Oh, work skills.
But we do partner with Work Skills. They're phenomenal agency. I know exactly. I I used to live right there. I just moved to, went more late, but I lived for twenty-six years, right there off of Rickett.
Oh, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. Frank, you have to be a resident of the county.
For our services?
Yeah.
Technically, no. We do try, um, with Michigan Works are all around the the state and we do try not to get into other people's territory just to, you know, be nice. Um, but if someone comes in and say they're from Wayne County and they're like, hey, can I, you know, work with you guys, whatever their reason, we will, absolutely.
Or or let's say they are in Ingham County and it's closer
Yeah.
here than going to the capital area. Or they're on the border of Washington County and it's closer to come here. We we can provide those services. But we usually, if it's Wayne County and we're going to work with someone in that county, we just give them a call and say, hey, FYI, this individual asks to come over. It's just a common courtesy as we're a connected system, all sixteen of us across the state.
We do get our fair share, like um from the Flint area. They tend to be a little busier and they'll run out of funding and they'll literally tell them, hey, go see Livingston County, they may have funds left. So we do.
Yeah, so the, an area resident, right? So they'd have to be somewhat close by or a resident of the state at least and that to seek services at the grants?
The state.
The state, yes. Like somewhere from Ohio that we were not going to be able to service them.
Okay. Yep, thanks.
Anybody else? Yes, or Bishop?
Uh, we do have federal prisoners at our jail. And so I don't know whether those federal funds uh would be able to be used for them if there would be, because it's for federal.
So we are, it's specified in our grant that we have to work at the Myla FCI. However, if you have individuals who are in your county jail system, uh, we can talk about, as we do in other counties, us going into it.
We do.
We may are, I was, couldn't remember.
Yeah.
But yeah, we already go into the county jail, so.
We do.
If you want to encourage those individuals, when they hear about our services being uh available to to take advantage, we will help them.
So we do go in once, maybe twice a month and work with any individual that um is closer to release so that we can work with them and then they can take that and use it when they come out. And then a lot of them will come and see us when they are released.
That's why I let the the real boss here do all the talking.
Well, as you can see, we have our hands in a lot of things and there is no way that you could remember which counties are in which jails.
Again, thank you so much for being here this evening. You really appreciate your time and the and the great job that you do. You know, I'm sure there are a lot of people working out here in Livingston County today that owe their employment to you and your department, the people that work there, so.
We appreciate it and what we try and say is, this is not a government, we've heard the term government handout. This is more of a rebate. You've paid your taxes, take advantage of these opportunities is the way we look at it. So we appreciate this body for happiness. Thank you.
Well, don't be a stranger.
Well, I'm hard to miss, so if you see me.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you have, you you know, not many people have to duck their head when they go through that doorway, but.
I don't want to find out what happens if I don't. Have a good night. Thank you.
Good evening. Have a great evening, sir. Thank you. Next on the agenda is uh resolutions for consideration. And I will turn the meeting over to Vice Chairman Jay Drick.
Thank you, Chair. We're at uh agenda number eleven, resolutions for consideration. It's on the second sheet of paper that was handed out before the meeting tonight. Eleven A reads two oh two three dash one one dash one nine zero. It's a resolution authorizing the Vital Records Historical Records Digital Imaging Project and Distribution of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by DOMA, seconded by FIA. Moved by Doma, seconded by Fiani. Any discussion? Commissioner Nakagiri.
I have a question for our clerk. That that um uh we're using Fiddler technology, is that? Are we going to have ongoing maintenance fees on whatever software, or are they doing the stuff for us?
No, they're doing the work for us because they will be able to import it into the imaging system that we currently have. So there will be no ongoing. This will be a great protection for our older records. It's our great big books um that we have no backup for. So this is really an outstanding service for protection of our records.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions, comment? All those uh in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Commissioner, um this does require a budget amendment, so therefore I believe it requires a roll call vote. Um the first three do require roll call votes.
Thank you for that. We'll move to a roll call on eleven A. You may proceed.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, we're on to eleven sub B. It's numbered two oh two three dash one one dash one nine one. It's a resolution approving the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act funding to purchase radar units for Livingston County Patrol Cars.
Move it, please.
Support Gross.
Moved by Doma, supported by Gross. Questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote kindly.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
And Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're now at agenda item eleven sub C. It's number two oh two three dash one one dash one nine two. A resolution authorizing the creation of new non-union divisions within MERS for employees in several non-general government fund departments. May I get a motion?
Support Nakagiri.
Moved by Helserman, support by Nakagiri. Questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our final resolution is numbered eleven sub D. It's number two oh two three dash one one dash one nine three. It's a resolution authorizing the sharing of attorney-client privileged information. May I get a motion?
So move Helserman, second.
Moved by Helserman, seconded by Commissioner Fiani. Questions, comments? Seeing none, voice vote, all those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero, unanimous. Resolutions are finished. Chairman Domas, do you wish to take back over?
No, would you take it right down to the closed session for me, please?
I'll do it. We're on agenda item number twelve, Accounts Payable Reports. Twelve A reads claims dated November twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three. Twelve sub B reads payables dated November first through November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Can I get a motion for A and B?
So move Gross.
Support Deaton.
Moved by Gross, support by Deaton. Questions, comments? Discussion? Seeing none, I'll close that, we'll voice vote, all those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero, unanimously passed, twelve A and B. Item number thirteen is called to the public. This is the second one of the evening. It's limited to two minutes.
Ma'am clerk, have any cards?
I do not have cards this evening.
No cards from the room?
You have somebody to answer, excuse me?
I didn't turn in a card, but I, if I if I may.
All right, we're gonna recognize Commissioner Nakagiri.
Take an exception.
I um just wanted to share with my colleagues um the, I I Googled around, and the poverty rate of each county in Michigan is online. I I sent you an email on that, but I wanted to point out um that the state of Michigan, the overall, the poverty rate is fourteen point one percent. The highest poverty rate in Michigan is Isabella County at twenty-three point four percent, and the lowest poverty rate in Michigan at five percent is Livingston County. So I just wanted to share that information. It I think that's um fits into uh many other statistics that we can be proud of. The lowest property tax rate, the lowest here, the uh poverty rate, um the best public safety rating, um and uh in the top five percent in the nation in healthy communities. I think those are things to that we can still improve on, but we are sitting pretty well, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else in the room? Not at all, you may come up, have a seat when you're comfortable, begin with your name and your residence.
Just make yourself right at home.
Uh well, thank you, I just, where's my footstool? Uh no, my name is Mary Ann Barker. I lived on Ant Cliff and um, well, Howell is my mailing address. And I would just like to uh bring everyone's attention to the drain situation we have in Livingston County. And I'm not, I am, well, there is a drain on my property. I I pay property taxes for my property that I can't use because the drain is there. And then Livingston County decided it's going to make it wetlands. Amazing. But my point is, is I would like people to know what's going on out there, you know, in our little rural areas. And this water situ, we have a very high water table here. And I just want people to do their job, like I was talking. If some of these drains are wonderful, they're like a an arm of a river. And mine is covered with wood, and and they haven't done it since nineteen ninety-nine, they cleaned it out. They want two hundred and twenty-five dollars out of my pocket, over and above my property taxes, to clean out the drain. Why is that? I don't understand, and it's not just me. They want a total of fifteen thousand dollars from the surrounding uh people that are associated with the drain. This can't be. I pay taxes, I don't want my house to sink, or they don't either. I don't know, this is kind of, you know, if more people were aware of it, I think it would help. That's all I'm kind of trying to say. And every corner you go into, you see dead trees and a lot of water on the on the dirt roads, I guess. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else in the room? We'll go to Zoom, anybody on Zoom, use the raise your hand function if you haven't already done so.
I do not have any, Commissioner.
I agree, there are none. Zoom is closed, call of the public is now closed. We're on to item number fourteen. It is a closed session, can I get a motion?
So move.
Second sample.
Moved by Doma, seconded by Sample.
Mr. Chair.
We do a vote.
I just want to articulate the basis for the closed session, which is to discuss a written attorney-client privileged legal opinion pursuant to MCL one five point two six eight, print one, print H.
Thank you, I should have done that. All those in favor of going into the closed session kindly say aye.
Aye.
This is, this is a required roll call vote.
Thank you, we'll do that too.
As a pre-vote.
Commissioner Dumas?
Strabo. Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
And Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna put people in the waiting room, and I'll let you know when I'm ready.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero, unanimous.